I always thought there was one here. Noel, hello? Mike, a great before we begin, you guys, if we decide, if the board decides to maybe move things around so we take Noel first, is that okay with you or? Another minute. Okay, close enough, I guess. We'll call the tree month planning board meeting of April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three to order at six P M. Uh, roll call. We have Jeff Young, Beth Gott, Brett Witham, Lawson Wilson, myself, Mark Good. We're all here. Um, adjustment adoption of the agenda. What do you think, gang? You wanna take, move things around so that we have Noel before? Uh, the short term rental ordinance discussion with Noel before, uh, the urgent hills subdivision?
And, and before the public hearing?
Uh, I would say we hold the public hearing first.
Public hearing, then short term rental, then.
We could do the public hearing afterwards. I don't know either way.
I think most people probably hear for the short term rental and maybe we should just get a raise of hands or something and just accommodate most number of people.
Who's here for a short term rental discussion? Who's here for the other project? Six of one, half dozen of the other, I think.
Well, the applicant doesn't count. Of course, he's here. I think we should listen to the short term rental first.
I do too, only because, uh, he's on our dime, whereas Greg's on Mike's dime. What do you think, gang?
Makes sense.
I'll take a motion that affect him. Move, uh, and you wanna do it before the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move item seven, do business, short term rental ordinance discussion with Noel mustn't of the lesson group, uh, to before the public hearing.
Second. Motion is second on the table to, uh, uh, move the, uh, short term rental ordinance discussion up ahead of, um, the public hearing on the urgent hills subdivision. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, okay. Sorry, Mike. Thank you, though, for being accommodating. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, minutes? I didn't see any issues.
What's good to me?
Yeah, and Heidi, I, I know you'll be seeing this. I think you're doing a good job. I like the way she's still in the minutes.
And we're sort of a meeting behind or randomly reviewing the one from.
Yes, March twentieth. Is there a reason we're behind?
No, she was just getting caught up. I do have the eleven now that they came out.
Okay, okay, good.
You wanna, you wanna take back that compliment?
I'll make a motion.
No, no, no. I don't wanna make her angry.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty eighth, twenty twenty third.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to approve the minutes from March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Wait.
Oh, oh, oh.
I was gonna recuse, that's all.
Okay, all in favor? Anybody opposed? How about recusing? Okay.
I wasn't in attendance, but they look great.
Jeff, Jeff, Jeff recuses himself, okay. Good enough. Okay, Noel, where are you? Step right up.
All right.
I don't know what you have planned here.
My plan is more of a discussion than, than coming in with, here's what you need to do kind of thing. So I thought we might maybe have a discussion tonight and sort of set the stage for what work you want me to be working on.
Right, and as, as you know, from the selectmen's meeting and the motion they made, what they really want us to focus on is some sort of licensing or, uh, regulation, whatever.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think, um, you know, a couple of things that we've learned over time dealing with this particular issue, um, around the islands is, uh, you know, what kinds of questions that we need to try to start to think about as a community and as a group, um, you know, like we did right in ordinance, um, which I may end up doing at some point just because sometimes it's easier just to have something on paper that everybody can read after. Um, but I would like a little guidance ahead of time to say, well, look, we can make it a very simple registration order, or we can make it a little more comprehensive, um, that really runs the game. So what I found another thing here is is that, um, the simpler the better with the stage in the process and that, that even goes so far as to, I've had multiple conversations about things like, um, even things like fire, um, or smoke protectors, you know, requiring those things in the ordinance is can sometimes be a bit of a, um, fire, you know, a, you know, fire program, but, um, you know, a talking point at moving that might have an effect on the ordinance, depends on what you wanna do. So the way I usually think about these kinds of ordinances are one, um, you know, data gathering, you know, we get, we need to do a little bit of data gathering in terms of what is it that you really wanna do? You know, how, how do we wanna think about participation for this discussion? My experience has been the more participation, the better. Even though the discussions can be a little bit contentious at certain times, but I've found that it actually created a better ordinance for the community that you're, that you're working in. Um, also, I think it's really helpful if we really upfront establish the policy goal that we're trying to, to work on. So is it, um, you know, we've been directed by the selectmen to have a, um, a registration ordinance for what purpose? Um, you know, is it to try to figure out, uh, how, how do we maintain a balance of particular uses in the kind of tree month or something to the effect of, um, you know, is it, uh, we need to create an ordinance that deals with affordability crisis for housing? Those are just kind of two extreme examples, is not direct if, you know, if. Um, also, I think that we have to start the conversation out particularly anytime we have a public meeting, like saying like, this particular topic is very emotional and we're all gonna have to compromise at some point. And our main objective here isn't to, uh, make a judgment on whether or not this particular ordinance should pass or shouldn't pass. It's to create the best ordinance that we can at this point. And then the board is gonna be the one that decides like how, how it gets moved forward from there. And then the town eventually is the, the group that's gonna decide whether or not that ordinance gets adopted. So, um, I just did, to be clear upfront, you know, compromise is important and our job is to create a ordinance that we ask to do. Um, so we're trying to make the best ordinance possible. And then a couple of other things, you know, as I said before, simple to the point, probably at this point where we are from my observation, uh, in tree mind, at our last discussion when I was at the board meeting, um, simple is probably better. So, you know, what is the things that we need to think about in, in terms of that are, um, you know, fees structure, who should be setting that? Um, is this a sort of a permit, a registration ordinance rather than a licensing ordinance? Like terminology is kind of important sometimes. Um, you know, what is the enforcement, um, process that we might wanna go to? What other sources standard would you wanna include in ordinance like that? And then, of course, um, you know, provisions and adaptations. You can create an ordinance today that's perfect, but a year from now, you might need to obviously.
Tweak it a little bit.
Ordinances are living documents and they're meant to be adapted, changes in, you know, the, the skeleton, so. I mean, I don't have, uh, much more to say than that, except for I'm looking for feedback when we, I didn't wanna just come in and say, here's a short term rental registration ordinance. I don't think that's really the right approach. It's not, it's, every town is a little bit unique. So happy to take questions, comments.
Anybody have any questions or comments right now?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Short term ordinance is, uh, I don't know, I mean, rentals and so forth are just the hot news in every community, especially communities that are tourist attendants.
Yep.
And big cities in New York's got the same sort of head hurts. And I, I've read them all, just of interest. But I don't have the knowledge that you have, hopefully, as to all things we should consider. I would find it helpful personally if we had a checklist of things we should, I mean, you, you went through, I paid some quick notes down, can't remember, okay, right? You went through some lines I hadn't thought of and, and I was wondering if you, your firm, you have a checklist of things that, you know, we can just say, I would not address that, no, 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 no. But we give us some, open our minds a little bit to how big the topic this is. It is, it is a big topic.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, I, I hate to go a little bit, other towns have gone close by and put a lot of work into it, having it just fall on a flat on its face.
Right.
Um, and I, I feel that, uh, the more we know as to choices we have and directions we can go with this, the better we can frame an ordinance.
Yeah, I think one option that I have considered, uh, and it sounds like this is a direction you're heading is, you know, we, we, even in the town close by that you're talking about, the first draft of that ordinance was a very comprehensive, several public meetings and conversations with the committee that was working on it, was actually pare that down to something that was more acceptable to the community at the time.
We, we were presented with a solar ordinance from, it was from Baharmer that was pages long.
Yeah.
It was difficult to get through, uh, but it did raise a lot of interesting points, but it, it's not something we would wanna do here, although we have concerns of that nature. So I think something of some guidance would help us think about what other considerations are out there that, that, uh, should be talked about at this point.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I have a full draft, a full draft, actually.
If I may ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead. We're even let you have two.
Don't take this personally, Mark, at all, but sometimes newspapers aren't totally accurate. So I had a feeling that what I read, uh, by our local newspapers is that the ordinance that was being proposed on Mount Desert was strictly the first year just getting a list of registrations. Is that correct?
Yeah, the premise of that ordinance was, you know, that the policy objective of that ordinance was simply it's a registration ordinance. And I think what you'll find is that the most important thing, so anecdotally, we, there's a lot of stories going around about short term rentals of this, short term rentals of that, both pros and cons. But anecdotes can only get you so far. You actually need the data to be able to, to understand what issue it is that you're trying to solve. So the primary principle, uh, policy objective of that ordinance was simply a registration ordinance.
Data collection. So, so, so data collecting, so they go to next step if they want to, they have some real facts in front of them to take forward.
Yeah, and what that does is says, you know, in, in your community, we know, you know, you can do some online research and try to figure out this or that. It's a lot more difficult than most people think it is to try to say, you know, here's how many exactly short term rentals we own there. It's nice to know, like, is at least owner occupied short term rentals? Are they, um, short terminals that are, uh, properties that are owned by, um, you know, just owned by somebody? It's just a house that's a really short term rental. Um, where are they? You know, what neighborhood effects might that have? You know, what are some of the land use implications of that? So a couple of things that I wanna keep through this process is there are really two major concerns. One is, is the short terminal affecting affordability or availability of your own housing immediately? And the second one is there's a, there are land use implications for this particular use, parking, um, you know, septic systems in tree month, for example, would be one. Um, other things that might be more land usey related and then the, the way to try to induce the land usey is a technical term, you know. I think it, I think the registration, the way that I think about it, and I think you, there was actually an article in my account from very recently, and Jesse probably hasn't copied it somewhere, but even the state is struggling with the same exact question. You know, how do we understand this issue? The only way to figure it out is to start with the data. That's, that's what the, that's what the principle is.
Well, that's where, that's exactly what I think about this whole thing is that, you know, first of all, is there, you know, cause all we know is anecdotally what's going on now, if at all, okay? So is there an issue and what is the extent of the issue? And, uh, that seems to be the first step for me. Um, I'm concerned about developing something and not being able to enforce it. I understand that Mount Desert, uh, decided not to put it on the warrant because that there's no real way to enforce it over there.
Well, I think I would say that what the town decided to do over there was take a little bit of more time to refine the ordinance so that it was better for that community. Not necessarily because it wasn't enforceable, but it's a really simple ordinance. So, um, you know, I think that there's a lot that went into that decision beyond, um, some of the other things that we feel about, but it's a, it's an issue that, um, yeah, it was, it's a, it's a, it's a hot topic. We all, we all know that. So, um, they decided to put in more time to make it. Um, but that, continue to have the discussions, which was a good choice.
Yeah, I don't know who else, uh, Jesse printed this out for us tonight, the draft of, the final draft for Mount Desert's ordinance. And, um, I've said it, I don't know who else, I've read it, but I don't know who else has had the chance to look at it. There's some good things in there. But, uh, and I like the life safety things, uh, smoke alarms, uh, fire extinguisher, 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 sorry, and things like that, but, um, I'm concerned that, about the enforceability of that sort of thing as well.
Yeah, I think that many questions that we can work on with Jesse to try to figure out, like, what does this mean for the town office? And those are the questions that I think a lot of people have because of the fact you, you know, if you have to hire an employee and that stuff. I'm not sure that this particular ordinance required that level of, um, staffing, but there are ways that we can continue to try to make it simple.
This is, I'm only asking this because I wanna ask a question that I would ask when I turn. What do you wanna turn? Okay, well, I might throw the question out there anyway, so I don't want to put you in a spot about it, but there is a concept in land use of grandfathering situations. And, and it comes into play in many, many situations in land use.
Yep.
If we create a registry, are we creating a situation where we've created a list of grandfathered properties?
I think the question, I don't think so necessarily, because this is a wholly separate ordinance and it would actually be a license. So, um, I think what the license does is, well, the licensing ordinance actually provides sort of a separate track from the land use ordinance and like a grandfathered use perspective. If we went into the land use ordinance itself and said, you know, define short terminals and say short terminals are only used in these particular areas, that would then lead to some grandfathering. That's, that would be the implication that we're getting at, I think.
But, but if, but if it's an annual license, then it's, the most.
It's separate things.
Yeah, once it's, you gotta renew it every year and if you're not eligible the next year, you're not eligible.
But if we came down, just throwing this out there, make it really bothersome for everyone, if we came down and said we want no more than twenty percent of the community short term rental. Something dumb, I, I don't know how you, the parameter to put there, but we want to limit the number of the community. That might become, and we go through the process and feel that's where we wanna go, might be difficult to establish that if we've got a whole bunch of registered grandfathered properties.
It's a race to the office on that day, the one annual day per year.
I actually think that that's the, so what I wanna say is, like, so the registration ordinance is the first goal and objective is to try to help you understand the problem. The side benefit of that is you're setting up a process whereby if it is a problem, you have a structure to try to deal with the problem in the way that you're talking about, which could be and is and that accounts a limit on the number of licenses that you issue. I'm not saying that that's what tree month would do, but I.
No, I'm not.
I think that exceeds what the select board wants us to do at this point. That'd be the second step, maybe.
I'm not always a good listener to select boards.
What's that?
I'm not always a good listener. I like to explore all the topics.
No, no.
I hate to even bring that up because I know that's gonna cause a little another conversation, but that, I mean, to be, you have to be transparent about it. Like this provides a framework for you to make decisions based on the data that you have. And the grandfathering, I think, would come in if you change the land use ordinance to say we are only allowing short term rentals in these zones. And then if you had an established short term rental, that would, that would, you're gonna cause a grandfathering issue.
Mark, what's our charge from the selectmen? What's our?
Basically to, to develop a registration process. Right, Jamie?
Yeah, I think that's what we wrote it on.
Yes.
I mean, getting the data is a no brainer. I mean, we even struggled with the, the comp plan with questions about that and we didn't, we don't, you know, you can do some kind of clunky searches on Airbnb, but it doesn't really get you within a.
That's what you found. I mean, it's not like you let to go to towns and say, hey, let's create a, a registration ordinance, cause supposedly it's like super fun to tell you a few things. It's like, uh, it's the really, as I said, like the anecdotes are one thing and I think that it tells you something, but you don't know one way to do that. I think that's, you know, it could be the exact opposite of what some people think, that, you know, it's a problem, but we might find out that it isn't fun. Or that gee, we only have extra percentage of our housing stock is, is in short term rental.
You know, the interesting thing about it on the enforcement piece is that, you know, for a lot of land uses, they're kind of overt and so you, like, you can drive, like a code enforcement officer can drive by and say, yep, they're doing something wrong there, I can see it. Right, and, you know, or an air, you know, or like a hotel, or, I mean, you gotta sign, but Airbnb is, you, you gotta be like a sleuth, you know, if they don't, if they don't register, you, you've gotta.
Or the neighbors.
Yeah, it's the rat, it's the rat enforcement. I'm, I'm, there's no answer to that. It's just, I'm just making an observation.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's where it gets into the questions of, you know, what is a short term rental? Is it a business or is it a, is it a residential use, right? And that's the dilemma that we're having around here is that it's really, it's a residential property and it's a legally existing residential property that's being rented out. So there are implications if you think about it as a business versus something else. And that's where, that's where you get into some land use discussion.
And what I saw, saw in the Mount Desert draft, uh, there are categories, right?
There are, well, Mount Desert, I think that what they decided was, hey, there are certain, um, in terms of tracking, there are certain things that we're not as concerned about. Those are the owner, more the owner occupied short term. So if I owned a, um, a house and decided to rent it, they didn't care about that. Tree month might care about it, we just wanted to be, so we could, you know, but that's, that's, it's the owner occupied nature.
More like a boarding house.
Yeah, or if you had a, like I had a house, I lived there and I had like a, an accessory, you know, that they just don't put up as a, they don't care about that. Tree month might, but that's the way that.
That's, yeah.
Yep, and I also have, before I forget, I wanna be completely transparent, I own a short term rental in the town.
Oh, not anymore.
So I completely understand the, the, uh.
Are there any teeth on enforcement to a registration ordinance?
Uh, yeah, I think there are some. Yep, I think that, um, I do think that there's some enforcement provisions that, and this really comes back to the board most, most of the time. And then, then there's like a, there's a, I think, um, the way that we addressed it in, in Mount Desert was, um, using a provision that's in state law for enforcement, so.
I really think you're gonna get people to do it because you're affecting their pocket, their income.
Unless they're getting away with it, right? Without registering.
Well.
I think, though, that, you know, the, the, so the question is whether people are gonna sort of register or not, right? And I think that, um, the, the, the risk that someone would take if, if they did that, you could provide that if they're found to be, you know, sort of, that they're, they're forever sort of barred from getting a license. I mean, you, you could put some.
Not just like a monetary penalty, but actually.
Yeah, you could say, you know, you're, you know, you can't, if you're not gonna comply with the rules and you can't, I don't know, we could look into it, but I, I think you could put some teeth into it to, to make it. At a minimum, you know, to the grandfathering question, if they don't do it, they're never gonna be grandfathered. I mean, there, there's, the flip side, other benefits to registering, you know, being on the up and up. Cause the downside could be you never, you know, you just don't get to do that ever again for that particular owner. So I think people would probably do it, think.
And in fact, I can imagine an inflated number where.
Yeah, cause they.
Lucy and I are like, let's have our license.
I might do it next year.
Well, I don't do it, but we, we wanna be able to in five years.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I do think there's probably gonna be a fear factor associated with it, um, that's just something you have to do. But there's an issue on N D I with how we consider the housing issue on N D I. And I, I think short term rentals gets a lot of blame for it. And this is one way to figure out, well, is it justifiable to name or is it, you know, something that really isn't as big of a deal? In some communities, it might be more important than other communities, but I think it's something that is worth, you know, it's worth like at least talking about. And one, one thing I will say that in Mount Desert, you know, just having that conversation was a really important step in helping them develop some other policies that they might wanna look at to help solve, you know, some of the problems that they're really trying to get to.
Now, certainly there'd be administrative cost. How can you set the fee, uh, for the license or registration, uh, so it covers those costs?
Yeah, I think that's something we'll have to work out. Yep, good question. I don't, I mean, again, I think you could write the, you know, the ordinance doesn't need to be a burden. It's, it's, it's the physical act of handing something in documented. Um, you know, it's the more details you get in terms of like, hey, this person has to go out and expect this or that, uh, I think adds a lot more cost. But we'll have to work, as we're developing the ordinance, those are conversations that work on.
And we do have a deadline of August. No problem there, right?
What was that?
No problem there, right?
You mentioned the, the difference between permit and a license process.
Yeah, and it says licensed here.
And I think we're talking about licenses.
I think we're talking.
But I'm not quite sure.
Registration or what?
Yeah, I don't think there's a huge difference between, I think it's terminology as well.
I'm.
You know, it could be, we call it a registration ordinance, we call it a licensing ordinance, we call it a permit. It's really the same. Yep. Yeah, no difference. I would pretend to call it a registration ordinance just because it seems a little, it's a trend.
And the other interesting, important point that you made is about sort of engaging the public and what's our process for doing that and.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, we talked about this a little bit at the board meeting and, uh, to me, it seems like we oughta have, um, a draft that we talked about a little bit and then have a public reading on it. And the draft, I, I really do think, I very feel very strongly about this, like the draft that we started off with is, was much worse than the draft that we ended up with in Mount Desert. And it was better because there were so many people that liked the reading that were opposed to it. And so if you just have a bunch of people that are all in favor of it, you're not gonna get as good of a feedback as if you have people.
Legally, we have to have public hearings anyway.
Right, how do you, uh, define better or worse? Or how can you tell which is better now?
For lack of community, we get a lot of feedback. It says, this is how, if we can start with the premise that we're developing an ordinance, so then the whole comment of, the, the conversation about whether or not you should adopt it, if you can sort of separate the two, and then really think about, okay, we're gonna try to create the best ordinance we can for what we're trying to achieve. Like we got a lot of good comments from Realtors, from people who own short term rentals, you know, how do, how are we supposed to do this? How does, you know, we had some advertising departments and, uh, people that own short term rentals said, well, we can't, it's not how the system works, so how do we do this? And, you know, we get a lot of good, I thought it was a good, um, s- feedback and we did great ones that was more appropriate for the town, that was really appropriate. that wasn't the one purpose for, the kind of, I was ready to vote for. That's, that's what.
Does it, ordinance ever include the, like, a draft of the form?
Yeah, we could create a form.
I mean, as, as a.
Yep.
I, I, you know, if I'm not, I don't, I guess I'm thinking about.
You can vote on it if you wanna know.
Well, right, my mother-in-law doesn't know how to read an ordinance. Um, but, I mean, she's, she can read the ordinance, but like, but doesn't know how to interpret it, but could see the.
Careful what you say.
Then she could need to, like, fill out, and that could help be like, oh my gosh, this feels like a lot. Like, this is gonna take me a long time. I gotta hire a lawyer and surveyor to figure it out. Or, no, like, I can do this. This is straightforward and.
Yep.
Do it, not scary. Yeah.
Do you think, uh, the first step should be maybe you writing a basic, bare bones sort of thing and coming to us at a meeting?
Yep.
And then we talk and discuss that and add things from there before we go to a public hearing sort of process?
Yeah, I, I mean, what I would do is call these all-public meetings, so I don't know how you, how you work here, but I would say that's the process I would suggest. And if there are people at those meetings that were talking about it, why not just take comment? Say, we read this, you know, this is a question, you don't have to make decisions on it right away, but you might be looking at, you know, it's an open conversation, I would say. That's, that I found beautiful. So what I, what I propose is that might take a, a draft and make it a little more comprehensive than what we probably will end up with. But just so you can say, oh yes, we've thought, oh, I did think about that, you know, the questions that we were talking about. Um, then we can share, you know, a fee structure, and, and we can start to build some of that stuff.
Is it too soon to ask you to also work with Jesse to think through some of the staffing implications of that draft?
Do you think you could get a draft by our next meeting, May 2nd?
Yeah. Not a good one. I have a draft for you right here.
Oh, you do?
No, I would, uh.
That is next week. I, I can't believe it's May 11th.
May 23rd.
On day 23rd? Let me look at my calendar tomorrow and know that doesn't matter.
Okay, okay. All right, what do you think, Board? Do you think it sounds like a good way to proceed?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back to what you were suggesting about coming in with an overly comprehensive statute. Or coming in with a simplicity, a, a simple statute with then a column B of these other terms you might wanna consider putting in.
Yeah, I think what I was envisioning is a, a draft, so we like a good draft. But then if there are provisions in there that are like, hey, here's one you can consider, you could just highlight it in a different color, so it's easy to understand. Okay, these are, here's like the base model, there's some other things that you might wanna talk about. Uh, to think about how to organize it, but yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
So thinking through that schedule, if we were to have by the end of May, something that, enough direction to then have a draft that we would then sort of present to the public sometime in June, get feedback from that in June, revise it in July, and we have it up in, set it in the select board by the end of July or early August, and that keeps us on the schedule. It does allow us to do a lot of iterations, but I think that's probably okay.
Yep.
Are we shooting for the 23rd, Mark?
Noel's gonna let Jesse know, right, tomorrow if he can do that?
Yep, I think we should do the 23rd. I just have to check.
Sounds like you have anything else to do, right?
Yep.
Does that give us enough room to keep moving towards August?
I think we just laid out a pretty decent schedule where we are due for some, um, public feedback in June, revision discussion in July, and then August. You guys meet twice a month, so if we have to do two.
We could always schedule an extra meeting or two if we need to.
Well, the other option, I was thinking, is, and this probably doesn't work, Jesse will tell me where he does it, is move our second meeting, the second down to the 16th. We gain, lead to gain a week, have you come to me earlier?
You can.
Yeah, but do we have anything already on for the second, do you know?
Do we have conflict?
Not right now.
Mark.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Um, I just was gonna mention, I think our August deadline has some room for the table. I think we wanna be sure that it was on the November ballot.
Right.
We just need ample time to, I think we have to do one public hearing as well, Jesse.
Yes.
The select board does, so you just need time for that. So whatever that timeline is, I think realistically, the end of August would be.
Okay.
Off, I think, September, so I wouldn't get too worried about a week or a week and a half. I think there's more time.
Now, we have two members whose terms expire at the end of June, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we don't know what's happening there.
Who's that? Is that me?
I know it's me.
I think it's me.
You and me?
Yeah.
Okay. So we don't have to worry about any of this.
No.
One more year's raw.
So I will just.
Let's make it a tighter schedule.
And get something done by tomorrow, right?
Yeah. No, I think, just to, again, again, I wanna, I think I said this at the board's select meeting, but one thing I've learned is that, you know, the housing issues that are being dealt with in all these communities on MDI are, are broader than just this one topic.
Yes.
And this is an emotional topic, and as Beth said, it's a livelihood topic. So people are, you know, it's, it is emotional, and we understand that. And I think if we can continue to have a civil conversation about the tasks that you guys were asked to do and come up with the best approach for the time, that's the way, really the way to approach it. And then we can have a continued conversation with the board, and say, this is the policy that we came up with, and what do you think about it, and then we can move it around a little bit. And it works through the process. The time for, you know, debating pros and cons of whether or not you should be able to adopt it is a later process. So as hard as that's gonna be, I think that's the best way to kind of start where we are right now. Our job is, we've been asked to create, okay, licensing ordinance that, that we can with it. If you wanna also spend some time talking about what other things can we do in the town of Tremont to help, you know, with this housing issues that we're dealing with, that's a whole different discussion.
I think that's beyond the scope of what we're doing right now. That's beyond that.
Right.
But, but it's, I mean, there are conversations at the comp plan level about that, although the comp plan's not gonna solve any of it, sort of identifies some of those issues. And that will likely then come back to this board in due time. And, like, I think it's, but, like, we, we simultaneously need to, like, define a scope and, like, take on a task and accomplish that task, while also recognizing, and I think Noel's doing a good job of, like, framing it in the context of sort of work that will continue for the next at least decade and public generation, as we define sort of our, our community and the regulations and ordinances that shape our community. And that this is a us step, and next year will be a different step, and a year after will be a different step.
Right. I mean, I, I feel like, um, there is some urgency to the housing prices. A lot of prices are a little bit, it is, um, you know. And there's a bunch of different things we need to add on there, but it's, there are, well, it's not actually not, you know, it's, there's multiple fronts you could hit on, and this is one that can address any thing that's happening. Um, and each town on the island sort of has the implications of short-term rentals are a little different, you know, so. Um, but there are actually good lessons that we can learn from Bar Harbor. Like, they're, you know, they're not creating a Bar Harbor model, but there's some lessons to learn there, because I think they're important, so.
Uh, my guess, Noel, and of course, I've been wrong many times before, um, is that you probably have a pretty clear idea of what that draft's gonna look like right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we have a good start. I mean, this isn't, you know, again, ordinance writing, you guys do it, but you don't have to read back the real.
Yeah.
There's a lot of good models out there, we can pull upon to create something that fits.
Are there any towns that have these, and we, we talked about the Mountesert one, that you recommend that we look at?
Uh, I can get a list of, think, of ordinances that we've looked at. Um, you know, I, we've looked at our Harbors, and we've looked at a bunch of ones out of state. Um, um, I think Stonington just adopted one, Bethel has one, that they were at least exploring. I don't know if it ever got adopted. Um, Kenabunk, I think, um, so yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah. Freeport.
Good.
I think we're good, huh?
Nate?
Thank you.
Thanks, Noel, okay? Look forward to that draft.
Yeah.
On the 23rd.
Look forward to it.
Any questions on, uh?
Uh, no, we're not gonna take public comment. There'll be public comment periods, uh, we're, we're gonna have to have a, let's wait till the draft is here and we talk about that. Sorry.
Good.
Thanks a lot.
Yep. Let me put it another way, there's gonna be public comment periods, you know, we have to go to public hearings.
Question, not a comment.
Yeah, yeah. You get a question? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, go ahead.
So, um, several months ago, when this, when this body met and the decision was made to invite Noel to come and speak to you, my recollection was that it was under the auspices of gaining additional information, not necessarily agreeing to have an ordinance written in and made. So it seems to me that there's a hard-horse problem going on, that you wanted information.
Subsequently, the select board has met and had a discussion with Noel, and they made a motion that directed us to do essentially exactly what we're doing right now. Yeah. Okay, yeah, thanks. All right. Public hearing on the Orchard Hills subdivision. I'll open that at, uh, 6:40.
We need to, Mr. Cherry, if I can say a few words prior, as some people maybe haven't been through the process or.
Yeah, you can say a few words, certainly.
Sure. Um, so, um, part of the plan is the addition of, uh, ten duplexes and eight acres, um, of alternate to separate the business operations from, um, Mike's, Mike's business. Um, we had the sketch plan walk and layout, uh, through that process, you probably met with, uh, some of the butteries that moved, uh, the opening ground, particularly along the, um, called the southeastbound side, increased, uh, offer from the corner. Uh, we also noticed on the plan that we committed some understory offering there, so evolution, um, of, of that. Um, other things in the plan that we considered is trying to capitalize on the existing wood roads that were there in circulation, which are trying to be adopted, sort of one way, um, where we could minimize terms and approach the used residential districts on that side. Um, and then also, um, through the conversations, uh, to have fire on. Um, the, uh, Mike, it was planned, obviously, he has some tenants now that's just, uh, more, he is full. Um, he has residents of the business that say they're now, um, and they're not planning this, uh, training to manage or define, um, at the moment. So, um, I think that's the genesis of it, um, we had a few meetings there, um, uh, that's it.
Any other comments or any comments? Yes, Jane?
So, um, I'm not in the butter, but I'm neighbors with the butters, and they are absolutely delighted that they were consulted about this project as it was being developed, and they understand what's going to happen, maybe.
Well, that's good to hear. Anybody else? Gee, showed up for this and no comments there, guys.
Does everyone know that this is the time to comment?
I, I think they know, yeah. I think they know. How about the board members? Any questions at this point or comments? Nope? Okay, well, that's quick. We'll close the public hearing at, uh.
Yep.
At 6:42.
Mark, could you just, could I ask one question?
Yeah.
Can you go through these as, I'm not sure if now or later, that's why. There was a representation here that, uh, no future plans to develop, uh, public improvements are foreseen as a plan out of subject parcel, but the survey shows a road going off, but not anything happened to it. I just wondered if that was for future development or something.
See that for here or us? Yeah, so that, um, grew his business, that grew his use, and he has rocks and buildings that are up there. Um, it doesn't have the capacity to grow itself, but support another five monuments. Um, but the way their, uh, makes the business restructure of the roads, it doesn't.
You know, you, you, you know the road up in front, it just sort of keeps going.
Yeah.
Makes a little Y at the end, I think.
Yeah, there's some rocks up there and stuff.
Okay.
Woods road originally had property.
Yep.
And through his business, this, um, all the whole thing there.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was.
I, you know, I think, um, that is not planned, I think, is the process that we've got is involved with, uh, this and special state DOT permitting, that I, uh, my, um, associate use, I was like, we should just do it. Because that's all the plan, let's get rid of what's exchanged, and after we move on now, um, there's been a lot of, uh, we, we're working right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, satisfied? Yeah. Okay, moving on, um. Findings of fact for the Orchard Hills subdivision. Um, we do have a motion here that, uh, we're gonna have to deal with first, and if somebody would like to make that motion.
Sure. We discussed, I guess, on the 28th, um, the applicability of the land use ordinance and subdivision ordinance and site plan review ordinance. Um, and I'll move that the Orchard Hills subdivision under the Tremont site plan review ordinance is not necessary based on the fact that Article II, Section B, Paragraph 1 of the site plan review ordinance states that the construction, alteration, or enlargement of a single-family or two-family dwelling, including accessory structures, is excluded from the site plan review.
Second. Motion and second on the table to, uh, find a motion, uh, for a motion to find, uh, that review of the Orchard Hills subdivision under the Tremont site plan review ordinance is not necessary based on the fact that Article II, Section B 1 of the ordinance states that the construction, alteration, or enlargement of single-family or two-family dwelling, including accessory structures, is excluded from the site plan review. Any discussion?
Did I see somewhere in the minutes that an attorney was gonna look at this for us, or, and did that happen?
Yes. And Jesse, do, do you need more detail?
No, for the record, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna abstain. I just wanna know if that happened. I wasn't part of all of that conversation. I feel often voting for this, either way.
Yep.
So I'm gonna abstain anyway, but I wanna know if it was looked at by.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we, we talked about it on the 28th, Jesse can also be an attorney. We've been talking about it again on the 14th, is that our last meeting, or the 10th, 11th, whatever that.
Yeah, whatever it is, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, yes?
Yeah.
If you look at the subdivision ordinance, you know, it's like, there's so many, you know, it, we have enough redundancy in our reviewing some of these things, okay, it's, makes it even worse. Okay, so we get the motion and second on the table. All in favor? Okay, um, who, who abstains?
I abstain.
Okay.
Jeff, abstains, okay.
Oh, one. Jeff Young abstains, okay. Which one do we take first here? You know, bear with us a little bit. We've never done this to this extent with a subdivision, since I've been on the board anyway. Do the subdivision approval first? Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We're gonna determine whether subdivision meets the following criteria, pollution. You want me to read all this?
No.
Take a motion to find that this condition has been, or criteria has been met or not met.
Sorry, I'm just getting organized.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry to rush into it.
I'm gonna make a motion that this, um, this criteria is met because the proposed subdivision will not result in, um, any material water or air pollution, and taking into consideration the factors, um, including elevation of the land, the nature of the soils, slope of the land, um, etc.
I'll second that motion. Okay, a motion is seconded on the table to find that the, uh, pollution criteria has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Sufficient water, the pro- proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for the foreseeable needs of the subdivision?
Isn't there a well, isn't there like a?
There've been a few wells.
Several wells, yeah.
Five, five wells.
Presuming some sort of report somewhere.
It's a little bit, um, the existing well on there, they're, they're supposed to fifteen gallons a minute, and a three, and, 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 uh, fourteen, forty minutes a day, have a well alone, we'd be lucky to support, but also it's a second well on the property that's two gallons a minute, and then, um, US Geological Survey showed wells in the area, it's very, around sixty, eight gallons per minute, it's around, there's, um, three, four wells, I guess the fourth supporting factor is, uh, is, uh, is, 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 uh, say, uh, fifteen, fourteen, two.
Oh, yeah, right there, page?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty, sixty-seven, yeah, I bet.
That's what, that's what it starts.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion that, uh, the sufficient water requirement has been met, um, per the letter from John Gilbert.
What page is that letter on?
Sixty-nine is the note from John Gilbert, which sort of summarizes it, and in more detail, on page sixty-seven.
Yeah, I would throw in everything in sixty-seven.
Oh, pages sixty-seven through sixty-nine.
I will second that.
Okay, would please restate the motion?
I'll make a motion that is that sufficient water requirement has been met, um, because there's adequate, uh, domestic, uh, water supply, um, as evidenced on page sixty-seven through sixty-nine of the application.
Second. Motion and second on the table to find the sufficient water condition has been met because, uh, there's an adequate supply of water as shown on pages sixty-seven to sixty-nine of the, uh, application. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Municipal water supply, here's an easy one.
I'll make a motion that the municipal water supply, uh, requirements, um, is not applicable, and should probably be removed from the ordinance. Because there's no, no water.
I will second.
You know, you never know, there was a plan to bring water from southwest harbor over there.
When we do get it, we'll add it back in the ordinance.
Uh, Brett, did you second?
I did.
Okay, motion second on the table to find the municipal water supply condition is not applicable because there's no public water supply available, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero, okay. Erosion, the proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion, or a reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results.
I'll make a motion that the erosion requirement has been met, um, and is evidenced on the, uh, excellent grading plan, um, or the site plan, which shows, we grade them.
Second. Motion is seconded on the table to find that the erosion condition has been met, um, as, uh, shown by the grading plan in the application. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Yep, five zero.
Greg, where's your number of pages, like you did on the last thing that we did?
Yeah, well, I was wondering the same thing, and I'm trying to juggle everything, no, actually, Jesse included in, in, wait, isn't this?
Your, the submission requirements are not in the order of the, the performance standards.
Oh, this is complete this.
If it takes you too long to have the number of submission requirements to where they are, the performance, that's only one week.
Could you just yell them out?
Thank you, Ben.
The last page was great.
Yeah, they let us down this time, huh? Uh, traffic condition. I'm not gonna read this whole thing, proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions.
I'll make a motion.
Bingo.
That the traffic requirement, uh, has been met as evidenced by the traffic assessment report on page eighty-five through eighty-six.
Second. Motion is seconded on the table to find the traffic condition has been met, uh, as, uh, shown by the traffic assessment, uh, data on pages eighty-five and eighty-six. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero? Did you have your hand up, Jeff?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Sewage disposal, proposed subdivision will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal, will not cause an unreasonable burden for municipal services if they are utilized.
I'll make a motion that the subsurface sewage, that the sewage disposal requirement has been met, um, and cite the sewage, subsurface sewage disposal section, which is page forty-six through sixty-six, including the HHE two hundred, uh, submission prepared by William Laval.
I'll second. Okay, motion is seconded on the table to find the sewage disposal condition has been met for the stated reason, I didn't quite get all that, so.
Uh, pages forty-six through sixty-six, that's the.
Through sixty-six?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Again, five zero. Municipal solid waste disposal.
I'll make a motion that municipal solid waste disposal should be removed from Tremont ordinance.
Second. Uh, motion seconded on the table that municipal solid waste disposal condition is not applicable because we don't have any, I mean, municipal solid waste disposal. All in favor? Five zero? You never know.
You never know.
We could become a big town when we grow up. Aesthetic culture and natural values.
Greg, page?
Which page, Greg?
Eighty-nine, ninety, uh, is, uh, for the comprehensive and special areas, uh, safe letters are from Tremont.
What pages again? Ninety, it starts on ninety?
Ninety, those are not the, uh, 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 that's gonna be, um, the thirteen.
Please speak up, unless you're talking to yourself.
Page is nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, uh, letters from Tremont, 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 Tremont.
I'll make a motion that the aesthetic, cultural, and natural value requirement has been met, um, as evidenced by letters from the Maine Historic Federation Commission, the, and then, uh, the Fisheries and Wildlife Department, and main natural areas program.
The main natural areas program?
Yep, yeah.
Second. Motion seconded on the table to find the aesthetic, cultural, and natural values, uh, condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
That's five zip. Conformity with local ordinances and plans, proposed subdivision conforms with the duly adopted subdivision regulation or ordinance, comprehensive plan, development plan, or land use plan, if any. In making this determination, the municipal reviewing authority may interpret these ordinances and plans.
This is an odd one, it's like, isn't it like what we're doing? I guess.
I'll make a motion that the conformity with local ordinances and plans, uh, requirement is met because we, because we're reviewing, you know, we're reviewing.
As, as. Yeah, second. A motion is seconded on the table to find the conformity with local ordinance and plans condition has been met because the, uh, municipal reviewing authority is actually reviewing the project, okay.
I mean, if we start off that motion, we wouldn't have to do anything.
We didn't, that's it, I know, we're, we're kinda, I think we're done.
We're done.
We're like trapped in like a spiral, we can't get, we.
I love approving my own work, too, I think that's wonderful.
Okay, all in favor? Five zero. Nobody's gonna object to that? Financial and technical capacity.
I did see a letter from Franklin.
Yeah, Franklin Savings Bank, yeah, that's on page eighty.
I'll make a motion that the financial and technical capacity requirement has been met due to the letter from Franklin Savings Bank on page eighty.
Second. Motion seconded, uh, on the table to find the financial and technical capacity condition has been met, um, because of the letter from, uh, Franklin Savings Bank on page, what again?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. Any discussion? I see you reading there, Jeff.
No.
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Five zero? Service waters outstanding river segments. I'm not gonna read all this.
I'll make a motion that the service waters outstanding river segment requirement is not applicable because no portion of subdivision in the watershed pond or lake.
Second.
Motion is seconded on the table to find the service waters outstanding river segments condition is not applicable because no portion of subdivision is within the watershed of any pond or lake. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero again? We're moving right along, gang. Uh, groundwater, pro- proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
You mean this is also about groundwater supply?
It feels like it might be coming.
It sounds, reading this, it seems like it's.
Based on the surf department, and the shore, and the, and the, uh, design, subject fields, um.
Okay, it's more about what we're putting in the ground.
It works, the surface becomes groundwater, right?
It's only that one.
So you've got stormwater management in, um,
Store water plan.
For surface water, um, and the, um, quantity, so the stormwater, surface water is addressed by deflation and, um, treatment of the stormwater management for the surface. Quantity of all the groundwater that's within the, um, please to mention, um, page sixty-seven through sixty-nine of the groundwater supply and quality, uh, is justified, um, through, um, the systems design, uh, less exciting than, uh, state, state, um, so we, uh, we have a tri-factor.
Yep, yep.
Can you take a stab at that?
Yep, I'll make a motion that the groundwater requirement has been met, um, because of the, uh, subsurface sewage disposal system, uh, submission that starts on page forty-six, the adequate groundwater supply submission that starts on page sixty-seven, and the stormwater management report, which we get on page one oh eight.
Second. Motion seconded on the table to find that the groundwater condition has been met because of, uh, in the, uh, subsurface sewage disposal, uh, storm ma- water management, and a missing one there.
Um.
Adequate groundwater, yeah, as evidenced in the application.
Yep.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero again? Flood areas.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, um, the flood area requirement has been met because no structures are built in the flood zone, um, which is illustrated on page forty-three. No part of the property is under flood zone, illustrated in page forty-three.
Second. No, motion is seconded on the table to find the flood areas condition has been met because no principal structures will be built within the flood zone, as evidenced on page forty-three. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero? Fresh, freshwater wetlands. All freshwater wetlands within the proposed subdivision have been identified on any map submitted as part of the application, regardless of the size of those wetlands, any mapping of freshwater wetlands may be done with the help of local soil and water conservation district. Any mapping of freshwater wetlands may be done with the help of local soil and water conservation district.
And then where is? What page was that? Is eighty-four?
Hey, you lucked out halfway, Brook doesn't flow through there, huh?
The plan includes them.
There. Yep. Great, I'll make a motion that the freshwater wetlands requirement has been met per the letter from Rogers and Long, beginning on page seventy-nine, including the map on page eighty-one, and the following pictures that identifies the.
Second. Motion is second on the table to find the freshwater wetlands condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. River streamer Brook. Any river streamer Brook within or rebutting the proposed subdivision has been identified on any map submitted as part of the application. For the purposes of this section, river streamer Brook has the same meaning as in title thirty-eight, section four, eighty-B, subsection nine.
I'll make a motion that the river streamer Brook requirement has been met per page eighty-four that states that no identified waterways perverse or found within the subject property.
Second. Motion is second on the table to find the river streamer Brook condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero again. Stormwater proposed subdivision will provide for adequate stormwater management.
I'll make a motion that the stormwater requirement has been met per the report that began on page one oh eight. For quite a while. Page one, like fifteen somewhere, I don't know. Forty. Nine.
Second. Will you restate that, please?
Yeah, sorry. I'll make a motion that the stormwater requirement has been met per the stormwater management report, pages one oh eight through one forty-nine.
Motion is second on the table to find the stormwater management conditions have been met because of the stormwater management report filed in the application. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero again. Spaghetti lots prohibited. Another one of our favorites.
Yep, I'll make a motion that the spaghetti lot prohibited requirement has been met because there's no short range.
Second. A motion is second on the table to find the spaghetti lots prohibited condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero again. Lake phosphorus concentration.
I'll make a motion that the lake phosphorus concentration requirement is not applicable because no portion of the proposed amendment is located near the Great Pond.
Second. A motion is second on the table to find the lake phosphorus concentration condition is not applicable because no portion of the proposed amendment is, not amendment, of the project is located near the Great Pond. All in favor? Five zero. Impact on adjoining municipality.
I'll make a motion that the impact on adjoining municipality requirement is not applicable because no portion of the proposed project process municipal.
Second. Motion is second on the table to find the impact on adjoining municipality condition is not applicable for stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero again. Land subject to liquidation harvesting.
I'll make a motion that the land subject to liquidation harvesting requirement has been met.
Should we get a statement from the applicant on this one? A simple statement for the record?
Sure. Should be heard.
Probably is, but probably is not advised in storage activity and the.
Okay, we have a motion, second on the table, that the land subject to liquidation harvesting condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion?
Is there a second?
Oh, I thought there was a second.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry. I'm so used to you just jumping on with a second. Yeah. We do have a second, okay.
Well, we have a second after he made his statement.
Okay, okay.
You actually made the motion this time because of what you read.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Let's have a vote then, all in favor? Five zero. Okay. And now we need a.
Can we get that in the record somehow? Just ask Reflet in the minutes. Thank you.
Now we need a motion to prove the whole subdivision application.
No, we can't do that.
Well, this is what's interesting right now. Can we do this before we go through the land use ordinance thing, or should we wait and then? Because the way this is worded.
You could just hold that option until.
That's what I, that's I think might be best, yeah, okay. Don't let us forget, Jesse. Okay.
For the, except for the land use order, section page twenty-nine, they have to come to page ninety-one.
What'd you do with that?
It's ninety-one of the civil.
Say that again, which?
Page, page ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
Civil requirement. The official all.
Oh.
There's a cross.
Which, which Jesse included in the minutes, right? That same thing?
No.
No?
Oh, no, the pages are all there.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. 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 No, it is a little different, yeah, it is a little different, okay. I wasn't sure why those were included in there, Jesse, but. Doesn't matter. Buffering standards.
I'll make a motion that the buffering standards requirement has been met per the narrative on page ninety-three.
Oh, second. Motion is second on the table to find the buffering standards condition has been met as shown in page ninety-three. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, great. A compliment was paid to earlier that you meant the neighbors. Does that involve buffering? And then you changed the plan? Do we have what you agreed to do in the plan?
What you have, so between sketch line and by line, we rearrange. So you had, yes, you do have.
Okay. All in favor? You did, I re-. We just talked about understorey growth, too, didn't you?
Yep.
Okay, that's all. Now, I just want to be sure it's in the plan before the result of that conversation that took place, that's all.
The meeting with the neighbors happened before the sit walk.
Yeah, with sketch, little discussion, all in sketch and all up. Us, taking the on-site, looking through the woods, because you can see the lights, keep this moving.
And then another visit by the neighbor.
I'm sorry.
Then another visit by the neighbor as well.
Great. And I do know on the, when we did the sit walk, that one of the neighbors was there, probably one of the closest neighbors, I think, that was affected, she was satisfied with. There were no issues with buffering.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'll call for a vote then, unless anybody else has any questions. Okay, all in favor? Five zero. Clearing or removal of vegetation, spelled wrong, for activities other than timber harvesting.
I'll make a motion.
I don't want to be cynical.
The clearing or removal of vegetation requirement has been met.
It's not applicable.
Well.
It's not in the shoreline zone.
Right, I don't know, uh, okay. I go back and forth between either saying like it's been met because they've got a great narrative in the application that addresses why. It implies, all right, it's not applicable because it's not in the shoreline zone. Stick with that.
Second. Motion is second on the table to find the clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting condition is not applicable because the project is not in the shoreline zone. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Cluster development standards.
I'll make a motion that the cluster development standard is not applicable because this is not a cluster development that required lots of side conditions.
Second.
Motion is second to find the cluster development standards condition is not applicable because it's not a cluster development. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero again. Erosion and sediment control standards.
I'll make a motion that the erosion and sediment control standards has been met per the narrative on page ninety-four
Hundred and four. Second. Motion is second on the table to find erosion and sediment control standards condition has been met as shown in the narrative on pages ninety-four to one hundred and four. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Yep, five zero again. Fill and excavation standards.
I'll make a motion that the fill and excavation standards have been met because the slopes will be remeditated and roadways and downslopes all less than two to one, and most instances will be three to one, first to vote.
Second. Okay, a motion is second on the table to find the fill and excavation standards condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five zero. Fire protection standards.
I'll make a motion that the fire protection standards have been met per the narrative on one oh five, and that the access to the pond will be granted.
Second. Motion is second on the table to find fire protection standards condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? I have a question. Did you discuss this with Keith?
Yes.
Okay, and he's, he's okay with getting the truck down there and everything? Okay, good.
Why is the easement needed?
Pardon?
Why is the easement needed?
Uh, because it's in private property for your allow public use of it.
To allow the fire department to get down there, I guess.
If we said the neighbor's house on fire, his force connects on fire, here is the fire, then you get your fire on.
Got it. Now, if my house catches on fire, can they come use your fire on?
If we vote yes.
No, it doesn't, it does allow for that access for any, any fire, yeah, it's interesting, yeah.
It also drops your insurance rate, still.
Oh, thanks.
Everybody in there.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Flood hazard area standards.
I'll make a motion that the flood hazard area standards have been met because the product is not within the FEMA flood zone. That's illustrated on the fifty forty-one. No, I'm not at that right.
Flood hazard is a hundred and five.
Well, right, but one oh five is a paragraph pointing to exhibit three point ten.
Okay.
Which is the FEMA flood zone, which we cited before.
Now, is this met or not applicable? It's one of those things.
I think it's not applicable because it's not.
Yeah, that's what I.
I was gonna change the other one earlier that about not in flood zone, too, but I let it go.
Yeah, well.
Conversation for about another application, and I don't remember who it was that advised us that like, in general, like, we should say that things are met.
I think that was John, wasn't it? What do you think, Jesse? Either way, it doesn't matter for the application, I understand that.
I vote yes. By saying it's met, we made an affirmative decision that if I look at the plan, it's not in flood zone, by saying not applicable implies that's not in flood zone.
Yeah. Let's go with the motion as it's met, huh? Who do you think? Okay. Did we have a second on that?
I'll second it, I just was not sure what it was, but.
Okay.
I think if it's, if it's as met, then yes, I have a second.
Okay. You agree with that, then? Flood hazard area standards condition has been met for the stated reason. All in favor? Okay, five zero. Parking standards.
I'll make a motion that the parking standards has been met per the parking. Is on the plan, is that on the?
It's on the plan.
Yes, it's on the plan.
Is the parking totals? Yes, because the parking spots are numbered.
Yes, two or one, which is very of the ordinance, they have like a one of the graphics running at a strange ratio to. Other than the. Is to provide.
Yeah, and those are illustrated on the set plan.
Yep.
Okay.
Want me to do that again?
Yeah, please.
I'll make a motion that the parking standards requirement has been met per the illustrated parking spaces on the set plan.
Second. Motion is second on the table to find the parking standards condition has been met. Two spaces for each unit provided for a total of twenty new spaces as shown on the plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero again. Roads, driveways, and driveway opening standards.
I'll make a motion that the roads, driveways, and driveway opening standards have been met per the narrative on pages one oh five, one oh six.
Second. Motion is second on the table to find the roads, driveways, and driveway opening standards condition has been met for stated reason. Any discussion? Jeff, are you thinking there? You don't want to rush.
Jeff, it's not fine.
Okay. All in favor? Five zero. Septic waste disposal standards.
I'll make a motion that the septic waste disposal standards have been met per the submission pages forty-six through sixty-six.
Sixty-six. It seemed right.
Yeah. Second.
Motion is second on the table to find that the septic waste disposal standards have been met as shown in the application on pages forty-six through sixty-six. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero again. Science standards.
I'll make a motion that the science standards have been met per the narrative on page one oh six.
Second. A motion is second on the table to find that the science standards condition has been met as shown on page one oh six. All in favor? Five zero. Huh? Am I missing here? There we go. Soil standards.
Which is both, the role about itself, particular, the litter keeps a fill at the same line even on the edges, so it's not going to cut scenario where we know this ledge is by being on site. Also from, yep, so that's the background form.
Is the state soil survey cables?
Uh, they are. The state soil survey.
Is here.
They are. I think it's probably at the very end of this M R report.
There's a soil summary on page twenty-nine.
What pages are?
Yeah, one oh six kicks you over to.
Kicked us out to.
Three T.
Three T.
Seventeen to seventy-five.
Seventy-two?
There we go.
Yep. I'll make a motion that the soil standards have been met per the narrative on page six and the state soil surveys. I'll make a motion that the soil standards, um, have been met per the narrative on one oh six and the, uh, state soil surveys, survey tables, pages seventy-three through seventy-five. And the, um. Road section. On the site plan.
Second.
Okay, motion and second on the table to find the soil standards condition has been met for the stated reason. Once again, will you repeat that motion, please?
Sure, uh, stated reason is, um, representing the narrative on page one oh six. The state soil survey tables, pages seventy-two through seventy-five, and the, um, road, the drive detail on, um, the site plan.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Stormwater runoff standards.
I'll take a motion, the stormwater runoff standards have been met for the stormwater report, uh, pages one oh eight through one forty-nine.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the stormwater runoff standards condition has been met for the stated reason, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Water quality protection standards.
I'll make a motion that the water quality protection standards have been met for the narrative on page one fifty.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the water quality protection standards condition has been met, uh, based on the narrative on page one fifty of the application. Any discussion? Hearing none?
There's a, there's a discussion.
Yep.
Greg, there's a sentence in here that says the fire pond will remove grit and grow infiltration. And I'm just sort of curious if, like, if silt is falling in the fire pond, does it fill up? Does it have to be dredged periodically?
Yeah, before, said all the work was in it, there's a four A. It isn't actually clay lined and that grit, that just basically a basin with grit, you know, periodically.
You do, yeah.
And if this, if, you know, if really dry, you can get some infiltration there, well, you know, the song just go over it.
So essentially, that's a trap keeping the, the stuff from getting into the pond itself, right?
Yeah, and in, in essence, though, um, if you just permanently stay with the site, it should clean it all in construction, right? It should, that should be established, you do have that issue. Um, you know, that, that's the goal, right? But it's pretty common to, to have a fire pond to have a catch area on site, showing construction, didn't know it was gonna be a threat.
Okay. Any other discussion? We all happy? Okay, all in favor? Five zero. Lake watershed phosphorus protection.
I'll make a motion that the water, the lake watershed phosphorus protection, wait, sorry, did we skip?
Easy for you to say, huh?
No, we do not, we're good.
Oh, we're good, right, sorry. Lake watershed phosphorus protection requirement is not applicable because we're not in a watershed of a great pond.
Second.
Uh, motion is second on the table to find the lake watershed phosphorus protection condition is not applicable because the project is not in the watershed of the great pond. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Lighting, outdoor.
I'll make a motion that the lighting outdoor requirement has been met, um, per the submission pages one fifty through one fifty-four.
Second.
What pages were those again?
One fifty through one fifty-four.
Okay, motion is second on the table to find the lighting outdoor, uh, condition has been met for the stated reason, all, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Blasting.
I'll make a motion that the blasting requirement, um, has been met per the narrative on page one fifty-five. That, uh, clarifies that blasting is required, uh, applicable licensing by contractors, kind of what we're here to do.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to find the blasting condition has been met for the stated reason. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. Oh, Jeff?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yeah. I'm sorry, maybe I'm rushing through this. I like to go home and eat.
As a side note, it's the only town aware of having blasting porters here, you have to watch to, kind of license blasting, put a cap on this.
I want you to do that elsewhere.
Most, most of the towns, uh, the, versus, all the, at least, all the, is there a form of any?
Correct.
It'll know. Traffic, but, um, specific term on end, or happening, who's visiting, lots of, they can actually call it, or the contractor has to, correct, which is interesting.
Can we go back to lighting for a quick question?
Back to what?
Lighting, for a quick question. I want a little.
Well, we voted on it, but I'll, I'll allow it, why not? Make a quick question here.
Greg, the lighting on fixture, pictured on one fifty-four, is that pointed towards the ground?
Yeah, that, on the upper right, you would picture that as face down with a shield on.
Okay.
You know, the image is kind of.
The image looks like it's, yes.
It is, because they put it on the table that marked it to, um, you wouldn't see it if it was this way.
Okay. That's all, thank you. That's what I thought it was, I just want clarification, thank you, Mark.
Temporary sale of food or merchandise.
I'll make a motion that the temporary sale of food or merchandise requirement has been met becau- uh, per the narrative on page one fifty-five. There are no temporary sales of food or merchandise as part of the subdivision.
Second.
Did you say met or not applicable?
I said met.
Okay. Uh, motion is second that the temporary sale of food, uh, or merchandise condition has been met. Any discussion? Not gonna run a food truck around there, right, Mike?
No, I would buy a test next.
Okay, all in favor? Five zero. Okay. Need an overall motion to approve or deny this?
Uh.
The, the land use ordinance, the two land use ordinance first.
I'll make a motion to approve the land use ordinance finding a fact, Orchard Hills subdivision.
When you said we met all the conditions of the land use.
Because, you know, we, I'll make a motion that we approve the Orchard Hills subdivision land use ordinance finding a fact. Because we have met, we have found all the conditions to be met or not, not applicable.
Second. Okay, motion is second on the table to, uh, approve the, uh, Orchard Hills subdivision, uh, land use ordinance findings a fact. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
None.
Five zero. Okay, now, let's go back, and we need a vote on the subdivision finding a fact, ordinance finding a fact.
I'll make a motion to find the subdivision, uh, ordinance finding a fact, Orchard Hills subdivision, uh, to be, uh, to, to approve.
Prove.
To approve the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the subdivision, uh, application for the Orchard Hills subdivision. Is that close?
Yeah, I think that, that will do.
Second.
The, the individual, individual votes will.
Yep.
Provide detail. Motion is second on the table to, uh, approve the subdivision application for Orchard Hills subdivision, right? That close enough, yeah?
Yes.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Five zero. All right. Anything?
Um, the only thing that included the language of the.
Yeah, Jesse did. I usually do it when John's here, but yeah. We all set then, Jesse? With that? You can't think of anything else, okay? Great, thank you, guys. And thanks for having a, a clear application. Once again. Easily understandable.
Well, you'd be, I have to know, in modern desert, they made a motion to approve, and then they say now we're gonna hit the pause button, you can go back this. But they have multiple places where they're working to rise and to stop, just like we did, go through something else, and then come back to another argument, so.
So even though this feels complicated and covered, it's not.
The only thing to say is like, we're not suggesting ordinance changes, but the great figure out a way to organize them together.
Yeah.
I think this is pretty straightforward, but the SPO with that, that's.
Yeah.
All right. Uh. Anything else, Jesse? Other? You don't have anything, okay?
What?
Anybody else have questions, or?
I guess, for a future agenda item, what Craig's getting at, it'd be nice to start thinking through what the process would be to. Make a checklist, like, to be able to organize it easily for applicants, I mean, this is an amazing thing, but most applications aren't this well organized.
You're telling Nick.
I don't wanna put Greg out of business. It'd be nice if people who are desk calling by his Greg could also.
Usually, Greg's all ten nights after calling, if you guys.
But like, it's just, we, like, I think our ordinance makes it really hard to put an application together, and really hard for us to review an application. Or harder than it needs to be. And I don't know what Solutions is, but we should talk about it in the future, and maybe ask our interim CEO to.
What is the extra requirement?
Yeah, like, if we provided the table of contents and said, like, and it was, like, organized and, and worked for both ordinances. And both the completeness and finding the fact, wouldn't it be more of a?
Well, let's get through the short-term rental first.
I don't know, I mean, I'm not sure we, we need to do. I, I mean, maybe we could do something, do it simultaneously. I don't wanna wait until twenty twenty-four.
Would that be something the CEO would do?
Hey, and the, uh.
Yeah.
So it would require changing the ordinance.
Yeah, and changing the ordinance, which would require going to a meeting and that sort of thing, so.
But I think that, I, I, maybe our CEO could help craft that, maybe we could ask for some advice from applicants who have gone through this process, like Craig.
So that's the question, I, uh, sort of, you know, going through both of them. I was an athlete, meaning the SPO was created and the purpose, I know now it's obvious that it meant to gather things that land use was more performance standards and that. If you were to integrate the SPO with the land use ordinance, that would be, that would be.
That's a big step in order action.
Uh, well, it would just say you have a land use ordinance, then you have subdivision, and you have submittals and submission requirements for land use ordinance, and all the stuff in the C, SPO. Falls nearly under every category in the land use, because land use is for files, so that's, uh, yeah. I, that, that, that would.
I guess my request is to, like, put this on a future agenda item.
Yeah.
I'm, like, fried and not thinking super clearly, and complicated enough.
The site plan used to be in the land use.
Right, and it was pulled out.
And it's pulled out. I like it better now.
Right, and we had talked about putting it back in, we also talked about having a, a minor site plan review.
Right.
All this requires a lot of work from the planning board. And others. And we've been busy with projects quite a bit, so.
Long project.
And some not as well organized. Okay. Anything else, guys?
I guess my other question would be, are we really meeting next Tuesday?
I don't have anything, so. I mean, why are we?
Why is that the first Tu- shouldn't be the second Tuesday?
This is Amy, tell me.
Oh, that's right, town meeting, yes, okay.
So. Why don't we just say if I meet you earlier than the twenty-third, I can talk to Mark about the six.
Because we'd have to have packets like tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. Okay, so the plan is, you'll see if anything comes in, if there's nothing, you'll talk to me, and then we'll say, let's cancel the meeting, right? Yes?
Um, bringing the I-LAR intentionally to case up, we don't treat it all over, it's a survey I-LAR seal. Uh, it's common that we bring them to be finalized, we should just go to the extension here, and even if you're compared on your own.
We've, we've done that in the past, and I'm willing to do that as well.
Do you wanna go as a deadline, just a little bit? I mean, I'm happy to do it, but I will do it, it's gonna cost you actually. Okay.
Or an email, send us an email, Jesse.
I need two phone calls, couple text messages, and maybe postcard.
John used to come home and actually see me.
Oh, yeah, because you're special. Come see us.
He and Melissa got along real, they put the shit to each other.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, yeah, he's flirting with everybody over there, so what's happening?
I'll make a motion to schedule our next meeting for May twenty-third, unless it needs to be sooner, in which case, Chair and the CEO will just, you know, play that.
Have a second.
My second.
Okay, motion is second, uh, to schedule the next meeting for May twenty-third, unless, um, something comes in for May second. Okay, all in favor? Motion to adjourn?
So move to move.
Thank you.
And we're adjourning at what, uh?
Seven forty-four.
Seven forty-four, thank you.
Uh, Orlando. I'm like an oldist. Uh, yeah, all right, here's a lot of driving. No.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that to you, I got to thinking, I hadn't signed any minutes in a long time.
Yeah? You guys are, you know, better men than I, or something?
Good night.
Good night. That was a good point about grandfathering on that, I didn't think about that, yeah.
Yeah. And that would be an interesting result.
Yes, I do. It was just my wife, man. I was, I was busy. Oh, no kids.
Uh, it was bad.
No kids, how'd that happen? I didn't know that.
I know, I did at first.
Yeah, I was.
This one has a day, what is the, the, uh?
Twenty-fifth.